Okay, I guess we're ready. Welcome everyone to what's become maybe a tradition of going back to online meetings. But welcome to our first board meeting of 2022 and our January meeting. I will start our meeting with a moment of reverence by Sandra Jolovitz Moats. And then Jessica Bennington will give us the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Vice President Wilson. If you could, if everyone could please join me in bowing your heads. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion and to nurture the bonds of community by making choices that are best for our students, employees, families, and community. I say these things in the name of the Father, of the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen.
And I will say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you both, JM and Jessica. We'll now turn our attention to the consent calendar. And just wonder if anyone had any questions or concerns about the consent calendar? If you could do the hand raised, that would be easier for me to see. No hands. I would wonder if anybody has an issue with moving the 7E through, I think it's 7H, the new courses? Moving that up to the consent calendar. Is that a concern for anyone?
I'd like to make a motion that we move the new course offerings to the consent calendar.
Okay, so we have a motion by President Zundel. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
And by board member Alred. And I assume the motion was to also approve the rest of the consent calendar. All in favor?
Joyce, I just have one concern. Joyce, sorry. I heard you said 7E through 7H, so that was all the new course approvals, but it left out the mechanical engineering services.
7H.
7H. So I just didn't know if you guys, sorry, wanted to include the mechanical engineering services or just the new course approvals?
I'll amend my motion.
Okay.
I make a motion that we approve the consent calendar, including 7E through 7H from the student achievement this, yeah. Including that. Is that right?
So that would also include the engineering services from Mount Fort?
Yes.
The new boiler in the ROTC building at Ogden.
For Mount Fort and for Ogden High School, boiler replacement.
Okay, board member Alred, were you still good with that on your second?
I will still give that a second.
Okay. So, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Did we have an administrative appointment in that? Or is that later?
We did have an administrative appointment.
Okay.
Sorry.
Did you want to address that now?
We'll address that now. Thank you, Joyce. So I'm really excited about this position. It's something that we've been trying to work through for a long time. And we're really, really excited to introduce Monica Gill. And I believe she is with us tonight. And so Monica Gill is going to be our new, was just approved as our new Equity and Access Administrator and Supervisor over parent and family engagement. It's a, it's a position that we're really excited about. Monica's been with the district for a long time. She has an associate's in Family Studies. She has a bachelor's degree in social work. She has a master's degree in counseling, an ESL endorsement for Weber State, and a college and career readiness certificate. She's very knowledgeable working with families in a variety of ways, which, and she's had a variety of experiences in doing that. She's been a social worker in our district. She's been an elementary counselor. She's been the department head and counselor at D Elementary. She's been, she is currently the department head at Ben Lomond High School. She's been on her Ogden School District Counseling Leadership Team. Like I said, she's still at Ben Lomond right now, doing a fantastic job, and they're going to miss her very much. But we are just ecstatic to be able to bring her to our district. She's a first-generation Hispanic student. And here in Utah, she understands what many of our students and families deal with and accessing supports. And, and we're just so super excited that she gets to bring her talents here to the district and help us engage our families better. So with that, Monica, I'll just turn some time over to you, if that's okay, and you can say a few words. And we're just really excited. We wish we could have done this in person, but we're just really excited to have you.
Thank you, Superintendent. So I am really excited for this as well. Let me turn my camera on so you can see me. So I am really looking forward to this position. Like Mr. Essman stated, I have worked in Ogden's School District for over 12 years. I've worked with our families. And from working with our families, I have learned that they want their students to be successful and that they want to be a part of the learning process with their students, so their students can be successful and they know how to support them. So I look forward to the opportunity of empowering our families, empowering the community, and also empowering our schools by working collaboratively all together and learning from each other.
Okay, thank you, Monica. It seems like you've had success in other areas of the district. And now we'll be looking forward to you continuing those successes throughout the district. So welcome to this new position.
Thank you. I am excited.
Okay, now we'll turn time over to the Superintendent for his report.
Thank you very much, Board Vice President Wilson. And again, thank you, Monica. We're excited that you're, that you're coming on. So as everybody is aware by now, we had to move to virtual learning for tomorrow through Monday. The governor had sent out a letter with support of our state superintendent and the legislator, giving school districts permission to move to virtual learning for up to four days. So this is now in place of test-to-stay requirements that were previously in place at schools. And it's been suspended at least through the month of January. Our student numbers did look like they were training in a positive direction. And it didn't look like we were going to have to initially utilize any virtual days. Really, just recently, our numbers surged through last night and today. We had some schools that doubled in numbers of COVID positives. We had a few schools, in particularly at our high schools, approach the test-to-state number. We also had a record day of staff absences today. We considered three important factors when we made this decision. The surge, you know, the officially reported cases of COVID-19, combined with an increase in the number of home tests resulting in positives, that we don't count in the official results, but we know that we have hundreds literally of home tests and pending tests that most likely are positive, that don't show up on the state Health Department reports. We had many staff and students who aren't attending school because they're ill. We had about a 7% increase on our average absent total of first students. So we have roughly, that equates to about 700 more students out of schools than in a typical day. That's significant. We also had almost double what we would normally have, more than double of what we would normally have of staff being absent. Coupled with the sub pool that's really struggling to meet that demand, it's getting better and we're getting more subs, which is great. But it just, it's not able to meet the demand right now. And we also have the public health system, which really has been overwhelmed statewide, and it hasn't been able to keep up with the surge in COVID-19 testing and the accurate reporting that we need to be able to really help us determine where we're at. And that's, that's nobody's fault. It's just what we're all dealing with right now with the surge in numbers. We also had a, we did try to do some things. We had all of our licensed personnel. Assistant Superintendent Chad Carpenter, you know, was one of those people that got assigned to go sub in the building this last, this last week. So we've been stepping up and trying to go substitute at the district office, and we have plans to continue that, that effort. But we just really hit a breaking point with the shortage of staff and students being ill and those other factors that I talked about, that we just, we had to make the determination to move to a virtual space. Our goal is to give our school communities an opportunity to slow the spread of COVID-19 and other illnesses. And our intention is to allow as many schools as possible to return to in-person learning on Tuesday, January 25th. So we will assess the impact of COVID-19 numbers and availability of school employees on Monday to determine whether any individual schools will still need to stay in at-home learning. We'll do this by really following the CDC guidelines of the five days of isolation for a positive and working with the Health Department on a school-by-school basis over the next four-day reset on a case-by-case basis to see if we need to extend virtual learning. For example, a high school, our high schools have very high student numbers, and they may need a fifth day to allow them to reset their student count as we work with the Health Department to see what that looks like. But our elementaries, many of them have a low rolling count currently, and they may not need that fifth, that fifth day in order to reset our numbers. But more information to come on that. We've got a lot of communication out to families and schools. Our schools felt very prepared. That was one thing that I, I was really proud of. We've done this before. We've been down this road. We had a lot of support from our district staff in helping create templates and things that the schools have been working with as we made this decision. And this was a much easier transition for our schools to make, to be prepared to handle these next two days of at-home learning. So that was a lot to kind of talk about. I mean, does any, do any board members have any questions about, about that process before I get into my next item? Okay. So then also what was approved on the consent calendar that I'm really excited about was the Friday half-day in the schedule for next year. So, so currently there's a limited time during the, during the week for educators to prepare lessons and analyze student work and to meet the diverse needs of our students. So in order to, for educators to feel successful in their positions and to help retain teachers, we really felt like we needed to do something and to minimize the disruption for our teachers and minimize the impact that it had on our students, we came up with the Friday half-day concept. This, this adjustment is possible, given the waiver of the 990 by USBE. This would shorten Fridays by around an hour at most of our schools. So some elementaries have already shortened Fridays and have added time into the week. And we set some time aside on January 31st to really be able to look at each school's schedule and determine a timeframe and schedule that will really be equitable for each school to really feel the impact that that will be able to do for, for each, for each and every school. So we recognize that educators need additional time for planning and collaboration, but we also recognize the importance of district-wide professional development and collaboration. So in order to accommodate that, we will set aside six Fridays a year that would be used for district-wide professional development and collaboration. The other Fridays would be protected as teacher preparation and collaboration time. Teachers would still engage in collaborative team meetings during that time, but no faculty meetings or school-based professional development would be allowed, and that time would be protected for teachers to plan, prepare lessons, et cetera, and meet with their teams and departments. We'll also work with teacher specialists in our community, our community partners, like our PE, our music specialist, the district specialists that we have on campus here at the district, Youth Futures, Boys and Girls Club, YMCA, et cetera, to provide opportunities for students to engage in activities on Fridays after school is out. So for families that have a need to have their, their kids still engaged when, when school gets out an hour early and still have somewhere for them to go, we're working on plans to really make sure that those opportunities are available. And both for, not only for families that need that, but also for enrichment opportunities for our students, for intervention opportunities for students who need more, more help and support to be successful. We'll work with administrators to provide school-based professional development during the week. So right when school gets out, it's already in the teacher contract that we can go outside of contract time for, for some professional development. So we, we will do that during the week, right when school gets out or right before school starts and, and really limit what we really need to streamline and work hard to make that time valuable for, for our teachers and our administrators, and we're committed to help them in that work. We've worked hard already on starting to adjust transportation schedules and look at what that will look like. Lunch would still be provided at every school, and food services will be able to help us with grab-and-go options, lunch in the classrooms, and different things that will work for each individual school. We've met with both associations, so our Administrator Association and the Teacher Association. And both groups were very pleased with this plan and excited about it. So given the focus on lesson planning and preparation time to meet the diverse needs of our students, we really hypothesize that, that we will have better, more targeted instruction and that the social, emotional needs of our teachers will be better met. And that this will result in retaining more teachers and, and it's super important right now as we're entering, as we're in a nationwide teacher shortage to really, to really look at some things we can do to make our teachers' jobs more enjoyable and to give them the time to be successful in the classroom, educating our students, which is really what they are here to do. So we're excited about it. It's going to take all of us to pitch in and make this work. I'm very grateful that the board was willing to look at this and support our teachers in doing, in having this time on Friday. And I'm excited for what it's going to do for our families and our students. And so, you know, we have this opportunity because USBE gave us the, the ability to waive the 990. And we want to show that it works, and we want to show that this is successful so that we, that we can have, that we can continue it. And so I appreciate the board for, for looking at this. And, and it's going to be, I think, a really exciting thing for our community and for our, for our teachers. We're excited to get this information out to all of them after the board meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. I think it might be interesting also if some of the district administrators, if we got some feedback from them on how it was for them to be back in the classroom and some of their experiences.
As far as the district admin subbing?
Yeah.
Do you want to hear about that right now?
Sure.
Or later? Did you want to? Chad, how was your experience?
Well, first let me say that it's always great to be back with kids, but really, as we discussed this afternoon, the teachers have gone a bow and beyond. I mean, if anything, it just continues to open your eyes about what teachers have been, have been faced with for the last two years and, and have done it so gracefully. I mean, covering for other teachers is now commonplace. But in terms of experience, it's just kind of all hands on deck. I mean, you see, I had the opportunity to be at Taylor Canyon, and you've got, you know, Mariah Denny, who's the administrative assistant there, you know, supporting Dawn, and they're organizing and getting classrooms filled and making adjustments on the fly. But just hats off to teachers that are continuing to do it day in and day, showing up, supporting one another. It's really a great opportunity to see them in action and covering for each other. But it's always great to be back with kids. That's, that's, that's always a highlight of everyone's day. But I know we had others. I know Jer was in a classroom. I think even Casey Bowden as well. We've had specialists who have kind of dropped their schedules and are back in the classroom. So this is definitely an all-hands-on-deck approach and just happy to be a part of it.
Thank you, Chad. I don't know if anybody else had any comments they'd like to make from the district.
Board Vice President, if I may, I'll just mention that while I confess I am not a licensed educator, although my mom was, and she was very thrilled and excited when she heard that I'd spent my first day substituting. It really truly is a credit to our full-time educators how simple the process was for me to walk into that classroom, have everything laid out, prepared, ready to take students through one topic to the next throughout the entire day. And the rest of the support staff throughout the school was truly incredible in making sure that I had what I needed so that we could continue to deliver what our students needed. And, and it really is a credit to our school employees and our system. As Assistant Superintendent Carpenter mentioned, that we really do have truly caring people in our schools, ready to do everything they can do to support our children.
Thank you. Jer, did you say what school you subbed in?
I was fortunate enough to spend a day with a third-grade class at Lincoln Elementary School. And I got to go back this afternoon and visit them again because I found I already missed them so much, so I took them some treats.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else want to make any comments? Otherwise, we'll move on in the agenda. Okay, we'll turn time over now to Zane for the Business Administrators Report.
Thanks, Joyce. Just a, just a few FYIs. I don't know that I've told you that the old seminary building that was being leased as a preschool will now become a chocolate factory. So we have a lease agreement with the company that they're going to be making custom chocolate bars out of that building here pretty soon. So we've already had a few samples. They're really good. The other thing is we've just completed last night our third meeting of our Land Use Planning Committee. And we've had some good participation and are moving forward with that process of coming up with a plan to recommend to the board to use as a template for what to do with the properties the school district might have that they want a surplus. And then I don't know, I need to know if I shared with the board the final report from Davis Demographics. I think I've shared it with a couple, but I don't know if I shared it with everyone. So just to be safe, I'll be sending out a copy of that final report for your information. And then also to let you know, in a couple of weeks, we'll be having some meetings with Davis Demographics to start looking at boundary options once the new schools open up this coming fall. So just some stuff for your information, and that's it, unless you have any questions. Hello?
I can still hear you.
Okay.
I'll look forward to that report because I have not seen it yet. So thank you, Zane.
Okay, I'll make sure I share that. I'll share it before I go home tonight, probably when I get off of this report. So anyway, that's it, Joyce.
Joyce just had a second of technical difficulties, but I think she's getting back on. We got you, we got you live, Joyce. We just can't hear you.
Okay, my computer died, so I'm on through my phone. And I cannot see the agenda. I'm assuming now we go into increasing student achievement?
I can help you with that. Yeah, we have the Board Policy Procedure Update 9.4.414. With Jessica.
Yeah, I'll turn time over to Jessica. I know Amber had a question, and I think it was probably answered this afternoon.
Yes, thank you. So the first one on there is a policy awareness or a procedure awareness. So that's 9.4.414. That is what happens when an administrator confiscates a tobacco product. So this policy overall is regarding possession, use, or distribution of illegal drugs and paraphernalia, alcohol and tobacco products. So for illegal drugs, those are easily taken care of, right? We turn those over to the police department. They handle the illegal substances. And they also follow their procedures with providing citations and what comes because of their procedures with that. For the school district, we need to have procedure in place when we confiscate tobacco products because tobacco products are not considered illegal for adults. And so we need to be having a procedure of what do we do with those? So this is a procedure awareness, just that we've updated just to provide clarity for families. This has always been the case that principals would confiscate tobacco products and then dispose of those. And so we clarified that for families so that there wasn't a question of, do I get to have that back? Or do we give the vape sticks back or what happens? It just provides clarity in that procedure.
Okay, thank you. So Board Member Alred, did that satisfy your question?
Thank you very much for that clarification.
Okay. I'm trying to get back to.
All right.
You're okay. The, the second policy that we have on there is a second reading. So the second reading, we covered it in our last board meeting in December. But just for quick reference, this is the Student Privacy Search and Seizure Policy. And so for a second reading, we haven't received other feedback or comments to it. In, in super short, what this means is USBE, they charge school authorities with the responsibility of safeguarding safety and well-being of our students. And so our administrators are to act as any reasonable parent. If they have suspicion of something that would be considered unsafe in the school, they have right to search. And so this policy, we followed the model policy, and it's reflected after that.
Okay, thank you, Jessica. Any questions about that policy? So I will ask for a motion to approve the, the first one was a first reading, correct?
The first one is awareness, so it doesn't technically need approval. It's just updating the procedure, not policy.
And so I will ask for a motion to approve the Board Policy 9.3.303.
I will move that we accept the new policy, and I'm trying to pull it up to get the numbers right, 9.4?
9.3.303, Student Privacy Search and Seizure.
9.3. 303.
303.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Board Member Alred for the motion, Board Member Blair for the second. Any further discussion on that policy? I don't see any hands up, so I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Okay, that passes. Now on to 7C. And I believe this is Casey Bowden on the LTE Progress Report. So Casey's still there. Yep.
Yeah, good evening. Appreciate the opportunity to start this presentation and to kind of give you guys a status, to give the board a status update on where this project is. Just kind of reminder, we did start this project a little less than a year ago. And so this is a good time to kind of circle back and inform not only the board, but the public of what we're doing. And so this is a good time to kind of circle back and and inform not only the board, but the public of what we're doing. This is the exact slide from the my original presentation when I proposed that Ogden School District embark on this project. And it's kind of the same as last time, but I want to reiterate, even with the at-home learning, right? We are still proceeding with a plan that is not specific to COVID, but rather continuation of the work that we're doing. Time, money, capacity, all things IT related to this. So here we are, eleven months, and I'm happy to report back that it's done as far as we can build it, given some things that I'll talk about here in a second. Budget, we are on track with our budget. And I'll share some exact numbers later, but really it was the partnerships that came into play that really reduced Ogden School District's cost. We know especially with Weaver State and UETN and our partners all helping out to build this. We did. We did exactly what we were said we were going to do. We delayed our access point project for one year. And that was expected. So as we have a couple of stars, and I'll get into some details here in a second on that. But all the Ogden School District sites that can have LTE on top of those, those have been completed. Our partner sites specifically around Weaver State, they have completed their towers as well. If we kind of go back up a slide and you can see this kind of this bare spot, that's Weaver State. And that has been fixed with their participation as part of our partnership. Kind of the expenses, the the short answer is we're about $201,000 into this project. A million plus project, a million plus project costs. But a lot of that was absorbed through like different funding sources, like our Weaver State University took care of the antennas as part of their different funding sources. We took on about $201,000 to do that, but we used CARES funding and other funds available to cover these costs to be able to build this network. The LTE core, you'll see that that is zero. That is where UETN helped us out with that as we're still in a pilot phase. And there's no chargeback as we begin to hand this out. There is an ongoing software cost, cloud services and things like that that we're using. And as I presented last year, because we're still in the E-rate or the pilot program, E-rate is not applicable at this time, even though it will be. But I don't have any numbers to share on those costs there. As you've driven around our great city, you can look on our schools. And the picture to the right is the what you'll see. Every morning I drive in on Harrison and I look at, you know, Ogden High and that beautiful building. And you can only see these towers from a specific angle. And that and we did that specifically on that beautiful school for that reason. But also when you look at other schools, we tried to minimize the impact of the visualness of the technology on the school. But you will see these towers on the schools as you drive around. So what did we actually build? If we look at our original plan, that was kind of the the big plan that we looked at. And then this is today's export. Now it kind of we put circles around it so that it didn't kind of go everywhere. It says, hey, based on this tower, this is how far we're going to deploy hotspots for our students. And so it kind of gives a little bit more of a realistic view of what we're looking at. And all these schools and locations on the right, specifically, like I could call that Weaver State, they've completed their setup as well. We originally asked them for one tower and they did two. And that just added to the network and made it so much better on the south end of our district. When we look at other locations to be completed, we still have Liberty because that school is still being built. We don't have access to the roof to put our equipment on yet. Same with Polk. We simply it's under construction and we have not had permission to do that, but will in the fall is what we will do. For those Ogden City Fire Station number four, we have just begun those talks. One story I want to call out with our partners at Ogden City is they had a need in the park next to Odyssey Elementary to increase their network. And with an already existing partnership and that we have, we were able to create a network from our rooftop to their rooftop to add additional features in in the park for security and reporting that met their needs. And it's all based on a lot of the partnerships, and I keep saying that word, but the collaboration, right? They're calling me, I'm calling them, we're talking, we're helping each other out to help the city, to help the school district, to help the university. And that that really goes a long way. I can't emphasize the partnership enough when when I say the word partnership because it's just it's amazing to see what we can do when we work together. Moving Ogden SD LTE forward, we still have to draft some acceptable use policies so that everyone understands what they're getting and what they're responsible for. We have to translate our hotspot setup instructions, very specific instructions, just a screw on these antennas. Where's the best place to put it in your house, which is next to a window? Inventory management procedures as we check them out to more of at the family level rather than the student level. So right now, we're handing out T-Mobile hotspots at the student level where we'll check it out. And we are seeing some duplication at the family level where maybe two students in the same household will get each a hotspot. Right? For this at-home day of learning. And we want to continually optimize our procedures and reduce our costs and make everything better. Because the hotspots that we're handing out can handle up to 16 connections at a time. And with the bandwidth based on their location, we want to just make that better. And so we're cost effective. We have not proceeded with putting the Wi-Fi on our buses yet, even though it is still on the roadmap. But I want to also say that we're also sharing our lessons learned. So next week I'll drive down to to the Utah TCC Summit Meeting. And I'll be on an expert panel to share out what we've learned, good and bad, what's working, good and bad, with all the educators and the technical representatives that attend that meeting in central Utah. And then we'll continue to participate and share lessons learned and documentation and technical specifications that we're learning with our user group as other school districts and entities in the state look at implementing their own CBRS or LTE network. With that, is there any questions I can answer?
Board Member.
Yes, Casey, I'm just curious. You mentioned that each little antenna can handle about 16 devices. How far can that one antenna go? Like if you lived in a tight neighborhood with homes close to each other, could that help do multiple homes? Or if you're in apartments, could you do multiple apartments even?
Yes, yes. So we have a couple of hotspots out just more for testing. So my daughter is attending Weaver State and she's at the University Village to the south of Weaver State. And I gave her a hotspot to test out because where she's at, she would actually go through Weaver State's antenna back to Ogden's network and to give us feedback of where she lives. And all her roommates are on it and she's provided speed tests and technical information back to to me to help provide that. And all her roommates are seeing the signal so much that even the people across the hall are saying, hey, what are you using for internet and how can I get on it? And we've obviously said no, but yes, if they're in a building complex or they that signal does go through the walls and more students can use it.
Awesome. Thanks.
Board Member Richards.
Hi, Casey. Hey, I was just wondering, how do you put that technology on a bus?
So so it's a low voltage device. So basically we plug it plug it into a power source like a cigarette lighter or adapter that they have on the bus. But a piece of the technology that we haven't bought and to test out is there's so you have like the hotspot, the router, right? And then underneath clips on a special mount that enables the hotspot to have two SIM cards. So when it's on a bus and it's traveling around our city, it will use our SIM card. But if the bus is used for out of our city, it will transition over to a T-Mobile SIM card and still provide bus with the Wi-Fi. And we just simply haven't had time to to test that out before we deploy it on every bus. It is on the roadmap, but just it's more of a time constraint at this point.
Thank you. I was just wondering how that would happen.
Okay, any other questions for Casey?
Thank you.
Yeah, well, I'm not sure who's going to start the discussion on the CTE pathways. Is that Heather?
I'll Board Vice President, I'll I'll jump in here really quick and kind of get us started if that's okay.
Sure.
So thank you. It's a pleasure to be with all of you virtually nonetheless, but glad to be here. And we've got a team prepared to share some exciting news and some updates on some progress that we have regarding Pathway Technology High School. So just appreciate being here. We, for the past several months, actually over a year, have been working on this new concept of this school. Started under the leadership of Superintendent Nye and has continued and accelerated with Superintendent Rasmussen in partnership with our fantastic partners at the Ogden Weaver Technical College. But really, this is a a new approach we're taking, a new concept with creating a school that provides all students an opportunity or opportunities for authentic learning, authentic work experiences and a pathway to their future education, career, and success. And so today what we'd like to do is just kind of go through where we're at. And both the concept of the school, the facility, our timeline. And then we've actually invited President Taggart of the Technical College to to join us this evening as well. We've had a small team here in Ogden working on this. Like I mentioned, that's included Superintendent Rasmussen, myself, Adam McMichael, Heather Gerard, Hillary Stacy, one of our teacher specialists. And we've been working in concert with President Taggart and his team, Chad Burchell. And even President Zundel accompanied us a few months ago down south as we traveled to Cedar City to tour a similar school in Iron County. So we've had a lot of discussions and we've been meeting regularly to discuss this school. What would like to do, I'll first orient you to a couple of the documents that you have in your board packet. The first is a draft of the MOU that we have between Ogden School District and Ogden Weaver Technical College that really outlines the concept of the school as well as the use of the facility which is located where the old Observation and Assessment Building used to be, which is right there on Monroe Boulevard and and just north of Second Street. So it's right there on the campus of the Technical College. The second thing you have is an informational flyer. It's a one-pager that gives you an idea a little bit more about the the school, the concept behind the pathways and competency-based education. And then lastly, there's a draft of floor plan for the school renovation. We've been working with BDK on some of the renovation and and cost estimates that we'll also discuss this afternoon. So with that being said, I'd like to turn the time first over to Heather Gerard, who will talk a little bit more specifically about the vision of the school. She'll be followed by Adam McMichael, who will address some of the teaching and learning components. I'll then follow up with the funding source as well as some of the renovation. And then I'll turn the time over to Superintendent Rasmussen to discuss timeline as well as President Taggart. So with that, I'll turn the time over to Heather Gerard.
Great. Thank you, Chad, and thank you, Board, for this opportunity to talk briefly about the vision that we are heading towards for this this high school. I'm just extremely excited about this opportunity and what it means for our students, especially as we've kind of moved into to really being able to do the vision work and and do some school visits and and work a little bit more closely with the OTech about what these what the school could mean for our students and the opportunities that it could provide for for our families and our communities, our community and our students. So I'm going to briefly touch base on some things that are pointed out in the one-pager, but maybe elaborate just a little bit more on the connection to this the school and the pathway opportunities that it will provide to the student and what that means for our our high schools and what our students will be doing. And then what that means for our relationship and their connection to the to the tech college. So with with this vision, one thing that we we are really excited about is the opportunity that it will provide for our students to align to a pathway. So the the vision behind the school is that the students participating at the school will be in a very specific pathway of their choice that is aligned to their post-secondary goals. And that pathway will start at the high school. And I and I think that is very important, that connection to the high school in the ninth grade for some of our pathways and to the 10th grade. It is still there, and that is where they're beginning their pathway. They're they're taking their CTE classes. So for example, if they are, if they have chosen a pathway for automotive in 10th grade, they'll be taking that Intro to Auto class, they'll be learning those foundational skills for that pathway and for that certification. And they'll be taking some of their classes at the high school as well. The connection to the to the new high school will be an opportunity for them to do their core classes in a way that aligns to what they're doing with their pathway. And and that is that is where the real excitement starts as far as we're creating a high school that will allow students to use the work that they're doing that will apply to certifications that they're looking to earn and go towards the graduation requirements that they're going to need for English and math and social studies. And they'll be able to see that relevancy. That connection will then continue as the student moves through their pathway from the high school. And that transition happens to the tech college. So they'll they'll be able to be at the high school, right, right on campus, right on the OTech campus, completing their core graduation requirements and then advancing their CTE pathway and certification with the opportunities at the OTech while still working very, very closely with our teachers in being able to show, you know, the classes that they're taking and the skills that they're learning in for going back to the example earlier for perhaps their their auto pathway. Right? And they're able to make those connections to what they're doing in English, to what they're doing in math. So it it's creating a strong connection between what students need to do for graduation and their post-secondary goals for earning certifications through OTech. And I I I really see the potential as far as when we look at what our students need right now and some things that we're experiencing in the in the secondary, especially in the high schools with with students needing to see relevancy in their education, right? Needing to see relevancy in in what they're doing in English and what they're doing in math. And this this high school will provide that opportunity. They will be able to make those connections, the math that they're doing in their CTE classes and the math that they're doing in their OTech will be working towards the math requirements that they need for graduation. And and another piece of this that's, I think, extremely important is the flexibility it's going to provide for our students to be able to complete these pathways in a way that's meaningful for them, that keeps them connected to their high school, but then has that close connection to the tech college. They're working closely with their teachers, both at this new high school and at OTech, moving towards that graduation at a pace that works well for them and aligns to their certification that they're they're looking to to earn at OTech. And I think the final piece that is really exciting is what this is going to do for our Portrait of the Graduate. So that this opportunity really will draw students in that want to see that connection and want to be able to see the work that they're doing for for their pathway and for their graduation requirements and how they align and what that means for for their real, you know, the real world and their next steps after high school. And and that really sums up the skills that we're trying to build when we look at Portrait of the Graduate. So with that flexibility, our students will be able to have that flexible learning environment. Adam's going to talk more about the competencies and what that looks like in a moment. But the ability to do online classes, classes, you know, in ninth and 10th grade at the high school for their CTE pathway, showing those competencies for their graduation requirements as they're working towards their certification is really going to create that relevancy and build those skills that are so important for post-secondary. that relevancy and build those skills that are so important for post-secondary success. And, and I, I think that as we move forward, it will be really important to keep that in mind as we look at, you know, what, what pathways we want to offer and, and how we support our families in making that transition. And, and this high school will be able to provide that flexibility to, to meet the needs of a diverse set of students. We'll be able to have students that, you know, are academically motivated and want to get through and show their English competencies quickly and earn that certification. And we'll be able to meet the needs of the students that need to, to go a little bit slower and need more support in making those connections to, to show their, to earn that certification and to move towards graduation. Adam, do you want to take a moment and talk about the competencies?
Absolutely, Heather. Thank you so much. And, and I'll be brief. The, the teaching and learning side of this, this concept school which we're proposing is, is deep in the vision that Heather just articulated. So I'll attempt not to be redundant, but focusing on the teaching and learning side. So we know that learning is a deeply personal endeavor. And at its best, we, we consider that through the teaching and learning process, we would establish deep connections between this, the critical content of any given course and a student's passions, their interests, and especially their aspirations, both personal and career. And then the, the critical and unique thing about the proposed concept school is, at its genesis, those elements will be a play through the design process, both in how we're configuring the, the learning environment, which we'll be touched on later, but also how we are designing the, the complementary coursework and making the connections between the teaching and learning that takes place in that building, potentially back at the comprehensive high school, and certainly with the partnership with the Ogden Weaver Technical School. So approaching this conversation too, and to add to it, walking into that school with an empathetic lens, trying to imagine the student experience, especially those students who would want to take advantage of an opportunity like these, we, we seek out what is the true value proposition for the students. Well, at the heart of it, ties back to our, our district's vision and mission. We're trying to empower excellence through education. But that word empower, for us in the education world, is inextricably connected to agency, student agency. And a lot of that comes about giving students choice, voice, being flexible with, with time and space in which they can engage in their learning, ensuring that the systems of support by design are, are aimed at that flexibility. But at the same time, we're not talking about just leaving students on their own without any guidance and support. It's about being agile and flexible in, in how we design those, and then building the relationships that empower students and, and provide necessary guidance, depending on the student's personal needs, where maybe some need more guidance in developing that, that more, that student agency and making those decisions on their own, and gradually releasing their responsibilities. They become more aware of their needs, more aware of their goals, and more aware of their capacity, and, and moving themselves toward those goals. So that is at the heart of it. Within the building, as we consider the courses, you would see a combination of things. As, as Heather mentioned, competency-based coursework is, is critical, and that focusing on student agency and focusing on the Utah State Boards of Education's framework for personalizing competency-based learning is, is at the focus of that. So these courses would be crafted not with seat time in mind. As you might see in, in more traditional models, it really would be a, a series of core competencies that are articulated with learning objectives, where a student is able to demonstrate mastery and proceed through those courses at, at the pace that is necessary for their own learning. And again, this is not without guidance and support. We'll have counseling support, access to teachers, access to additional supports as well. But that gives them the flexibility within their schedule to also align that with their needs and their opportunities at the tech college, to determine what is best for them and what best modality and what best pacing is for them in there. Also, for our students, we, we would continue to have online opportunities available for them. So again, flexibility in designing a schedule, having a voice in how they do that will, will free up and, and give them opportunities that they might not otherwise have if they were just within a traditional model. Then the final part with the competency, with the teaching and learning model, is to take advantage of the proximity to the, the tech college, and again, actualizing our, our commitment to those pathways and the relevancy that Heather spoke about. And this isn't just proximity and distance. That is important. That will free up opportunities for our students as they, they travel to our facility next to the, the tech college to engage in learning there, but also just have that quick access to the, the coursework and the learning at the, at the tech college. That's important. But by design, which we come back, the relationships that are being melded right now between leadership at the Ogden Weaver Technical College and our district, and the teaching staff that will exist involved, that will take advantage of the, the proximity, kind of figuratively speaking, in the learning. So we had already talked about some of the work we'd done when we went to Iron County. We had a chance to kind of start engaging in conceptual design of what that learning might look like. And part of that is even things like communicating clearly the requirements they would see on the district side, and how their engagement and pathways and programs through the Technical College might satisfy some of those requirements. And that, that we would sit down as a combined staff and clearly, you know, kind of cross-reference what's happening at the Technical College, their programs, expectations, the pathways at our school, and our courses, and ensure that a student, the students don't get redundant action, that we have clear streamlined interaction between those types of coursework. Again, just continuing to build that momentum and advance them, not just toward graduation, but graduation as a through point toward meaningful career opportunities for them. And that's at the heart of the design. And again, we're trying to do those things in our comprehensive high schools. The unique opportunity here is from its inception, those elements will be a part of its core architecture and be a designing principle as we move forward. And with that, I, I turn the time to our next speaker. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. So I just want to say how proud I am of this team and, and all the work that's gone into really developing this, this option for our students. And, and I'm really excited about the pathways that these students will get to engage in. We already have a really strong partnership with Ogden Weaver Tech College. President Taggart is, is a great partner. He's a, he's a thought partner. He's, he's been great to work with. But our, our students really take advantage of the opportunities there. And, and this is going to broaden those opportunities, and it's going to create a space that's going to really meet these kids where they're at. And I'm excited for that. And so we, we just, you know, we're, we're going to keep working on this as we, as we progress. The timeline right now that I'll, I'll talk about before I turn some time over to President Taggart, is we are seeking our board's approval. We also have a board member, you know, Ms. Blair, Nancy Blair, that's on the tech colleges board. And we will then go to the tech college board and seek their approval. And, and then we would get the MOU in place, and then we would start construction on the building and start making this building a space that's, that's really conducive to the type of learning that our students are going to engage in and, and provide opportunities for them that are just amazing. So we, we're excited for that. And with that, I'll turn some time over to President Taggart.
Thank you, Superintendent. I, I appreciate your kind words. This really has been a well-thought-out process. The student and the ability for students to succeed has been the heart of everything that we've talked about, and it's been a joy to work with, with Heather, with Chad, with Superintendent Rasmussen, and with Adam. When you look at the MOU, we are talking about a physical space. We're talking about a building and a five acres of land that the, that the college surrounds that we acquired a, a few years ago. But the MOU really is not focused as much on the building and land use as it is on what is the instructional process and how we help students succeed. This, this student-focused plan is going to increase on-time high school completion. It's going to increase early high school completion by students, and it's going to increase the number of students who have a post-secondary college credential before they graduate. Now Ogden School District already has a phenomenal track record of high school students who completed tech college certificate. But this is going to allow more students to complete longer certificates tuition-free while they're still in high school, and be able to also leverage that towards university credit at Utah State University, at Weber State University, or one of our other Uchi partners. Let me give you just a, a snapshot of how amazing the Ogden School District students are right now. Two years ago, we had a banner enrollment year from the district. This is 2020. Pandemic started towards the end. We had 953 students from Ogden School District that were enrolled in early college courses, whether they were on our main campus, our Business Depot campus, or coursework programs that we offer at Ben Lomond Ogden at George Washington High School. So 953, 253 of those students were on our main campus. Last year, that dropped, and we recognized that would, that, that number would drop because of the pandemic. It didn't drop as much as we thought it would, surprisingly. It, it dropped from 953 students to 794. This year already, we have 270 students enrolled on the main campus. That eclipses all the students we had two years ago for the entire year. We're only halfway through the school year. I talk to parents every week when I'm out in, in the community, and they're saying, I want my kid to be able to go to Ogden Weaver Tech. But they have the challenges of a student from Ben Lomond High School, which is our closest high school, for them to come and attend one class period on our main campus, they're going to lose an hour to an hour and a half on both ends of that one period. So that limits their ability to come and tell many times they're a senior. This ability to have students in one location where they're working on competency-based high school completion, and the, in the same competency-based format, and, and gaining high-level, college-level skills, is, is going to be a game changer. You are going to see Ogden School District lead out with a number of individuals who graduate on time and already have a post-secondary credential. I, I appreciate the, the opportunity that the district gave for some of my staff to go down to Iron County and look at some of the things they're doing there. I guarantee you, a year after this building opens, Iron County's going to want to visit and say, okay, you took what we were doing, you made it better. What can we learn from you? This really is going to be the model for the rest of the state of Utah on how to leverage high-quality, competency-based secondary education with great post-secondary technical education. So again, thank you for this opportunity and for your consideration in this wonderful joint effort for our shared students.
Okay. Thank you all. Does anyone have any questions for this group of folks that have been highly involved in this partnership? Okay. I actually have two questions. So the current requirements for a high school graduation here in the state of Utah, some of the things don't seem to fit for me in technical education. So are we allowed to get waivers? Like you need a, a fine arts or financial literacy? Are there options to get waivers from the state?
Adam, do you want me to answer that, or?
Hey, go ahead, Heather.
Okay. So, so Joyce, we, in regards to your question, the, the structure of getting the student through their competencies and their core classes, and then those elective and graduation requirements will be based on the needs of the student, right? So some of the CTE pathways actually fulfill those other credits that you may not typically think. For example, there's a digital arts class that fulfills an art credit. And one of the classes that we approved tonight actually fulfills a financial lit credit and also aligns with the human development pathway. So, so, and that, I think that also speaks to kind of the power and the excitement behind this high school, is there's going to be a lot of one-on-one coaching on looking at what the student needs. And they will have the ability to show those competencies in, in math and English and social studies and in their CTE pathways. But then we will, you know, be supporting the student in completing some of those other graduation requirements at the high school or online. It, it kind of, again, it's going to depend on the student's pathway, the need, the current need of the student, what the student would like to accomplish, or they, you know, wanting to take some classes in their 10th grade year at their high school. So we have a lot of flexibility as far as making sure that the students not only have the opportunity to, to graduate at the rate that they are prepared for, as President Taggart mentioned, you know, and in some cases, maybe even graduating early, but, but also that we are advising the student in a way that meets their needs, both at the new high school, through their pathways, to make sure we're not having them do an art credit when they don't need it, as an example. And then also what needs to happen pre-OTech, right? What are the things that we want to take up, have them be prepared for, or get that graduation credit, I should say, before they start moving to, to OTech? So there's going to be a lot of one-on-one coaching and support between the teachers and the counselors, and a lot of collaboration between all three high schools, which is a strength to the student and to our families.
Thank you, Heather. My other question, I guess it's kind of along the same lines. So we do have students, obviously 270, that attend the main campus. Would they still have this option, or they, would they be required to now be part of this Pathway High School, which I still want to call it Junction City High School? So I don't know who might know the answer.
I, I can answer that as well. I struggle too. I, I keep stumbling because I want to call it Junction, just because that's what we've been calling it. So I, I keep pausing, the new high school. So this will be, I, I, so just let me clarify. Your, your question is, will we be able to have students that, for example, stay at Ben Lomond and complete all of their graduation requirements through Ben Lomond, but also take classes from OTech? Absolutely, yeah. So this is just an additional opportunity. This is going to meet the needs of, I think, a lot of different types of students. But we will, you know, for example, students that are looking for relevancy, more relevancy in what they're doing in their day-to-day education, as far as seeing how that's connected to the, the skills, the job skills that they're learning at OTech. It, it's going to, you know, students are going to be drawn to it, as President Taggart mentioned, that would like to, to move quickly through their, through their graduation requirements and really focus on that post-secondary credential. But we will definitely have for our more traditional students, the opportunity for them to stay at the high school, complete their traditional high school graduation, and, and use OTech as a resource. President Taggart, I don't know if you want to add anything to that, or?
No, no. Heather, you, you did a great job on that. One of the things that we're hoping that we'll be able to do in the future, right now, for, for a student to come and enroll in a, a, a program on our college campus, our main campus, our BDO campus, these are adult programs, so the student needs to be, completed their sophomore year. They need to be close to age 16. We found that's, that's the best age to, to put them into an adult learning environment. However, for the programs we have at Ben Lomond, Ogden, and George Washington, those are construction tech, composites, welding, robotics, and we have automated manufacturing early morning, both at Ben Lomond and Ogden High School. Those students can start in 10th grade because they're co-horted, they're not mixed in with adult students. We have a lot of parents that would love their 10th graders to be able to attend programs on our college campus, and we can't replicate those labs at any of the area high schools. First of all, there's not enough space, and it just is not cost-effective for us to replicate very, very expensive equipment. However, if we have students attending Pathway High School, Junction High School, the Wilton Institute for Advancement.
That's Wilson Academy.
The, the Wilson Academy. We, we, if we have enough 10th graders that are interested in the same content area, we can cohort them and teach the, the theory portion at that high school, and bring them over. Because they're on our campus, they can access that high-tech equipment in 10th grade. They don't have to wait until 11th or 12th grade. That's one of the benefits of having them co-located on that campus. And, and so we're going to see this be very much an evolutionary process. And and so we're going to see this be very much an evolutionary process. You know, I, our vision is we're going to outgrow the space jointly together. We want to make sure that we have shared support services. That we're we're working in that space with our counselors, our pre-enrollment advisors. That we really do have shared ownership for the success of the student. That the tech college takes an investment in making sure those students are graduating and completing their high school requirements. Just as much as the high school wants to make sure that they're on track and on pace to complete their post-secondary education. It'll become more seamless than any other partnership, I think, exists between a school district and a college or university in the state of Utah.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? So I guess we're looking for a, an approval for this recommendation.
Um, being a member of the Board of Trustees for the tech college, I would love the opportunity to make this motion. So, um, I prove, I hope I get this right. I move that we approve the CTE pathways. High school with the partnership of the Ogden School District and the Ogden Weaver Technical College.
Thank you, Board Member Blair. Do we have a second?
I will second that because I think it's a great move that they should do this. So, good job.
Thank you, Board Member Barker. So, all in favor of this motion? Don't have anybody opposed. Okay, thank you all and thank you, President Taggart. Good to see you again.
It's good to see you, Joyce.
And congratulations to you. Do you know what I mean? Engagement.
Thank you, Vice President Wilson.
And I just want to chime in real quick, Joyce, and just say, hey, thanks. Thanks for being here, Jim, and thanks for allowing your staff to be a part of the process and allowing them to. Help build this out with us. I think it's making it a much more purposeful effort. And we learned a lot of things along the way. A lot of the work you're already doing with our transition students, a lot of the work, you know, that that's that really is parallel to some of the things we're going to try to do. And so. Just appreciate you being accessible and willing to partner with us on this. We're we're really, really excited.
And I'd like to second that. Congratulations, Jim.
Thank you all. And and Board Member Blair, that's trustee Blair to me. In March, when we give this presentation again to the Ogden Weaver Tech College Board of Trustees, you can make the same motion in that meeting as well.
Thank you. Okay, I'll do that. Isn't that February, though?
February, yeah.
You're correct.
Okay, thank you.
So the public hearing is to start at seven. And I'm not sure what the public, oh, I'm sorry, Board Member Alred. You had your hand up?
I do. I'm trying to pull it back down too. There we go. Hey, so I was just thinking. President Taggart, what you're talking about, we might outgrow this. When looking at the floor plan, is it possible to plan ahead for that extra growth? Before we do the final build and everything?
I need to unmute. I I'm going to defer to the. To the district staff to look at, you know, is there the o- opportunity for an existing building that was really built as a correctional facility? Office space, treatment areas and and housing for youth offenders. Doesn't have the ability to add on. One of the things that that this MOU does allow is there is five acres there. There is space. For expansion and growth and and that expansion and growth may not take place in that same space. If we have a proof of proof of concept, this works really, really well. That space may be somewhere else on on the campus. We're going through our master planning right now in looking at our next instructional building. By the way, that is called the Pathways Building. So. Should have copyrighted that, trademarked it. And we may change the name of that. But we're looking for additional space as well. In in building out instructional space that would have some shared space with our district partners, both Ogden School District, our university partners. Where we want to have the ability for more of our students to complete associate degrees and even bachelor's degrees on our campus from Weber State. And then our our partnership with. Weber School District and soon Ogden School District with Adult Education Services on our on our campus as well. So there's plenty of space and potential for growth. And it may not take place with that existing building. It could could be a a different structure. But I I, Board Member Alred, I love where you're going already with that.
Thank you.
And I'll just chime in and say, you know, I I I love that as well. The building actually. It it it's way more conducive when you actually go in there and tour and see the 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 possibilities of the building and what it can be. It's far better than some of the buildings we've looked at that where they're currently doing this. And so we're pretty excited about the space. We we think it's going to be a great. A great space. It's going to provide, potentially, we'll we'll add in a teen center. Where students that are, you know, struggling to have the ability to to, you know, have hygiene and shower and get food and do the different, meet their basic needs. Will be able to go in and and make that happen in that building. There's a kitchen that we that we're going to look at remodeling. There's. There's a big open space that allows for a maker space and some recreation area and kind of a big fill. A really, a really nice kind of cafe, you know, seating, open learning space fill. There's some great learning environments in there. And it's pretty spacious. So we we're really optimistic about the opportunities to to get kids in there and make it. It's going to be really conducive to what we're trying to do there. And then down the road, if we can build this out right, then yeah, I think we, I would be super excited to expand.
Board Member Blair, you had your hand up?
Yes, um, some of us had the opportunity of touring that learning space. And maybe it would be beneficial if some of the board members that did not, that were not able to. Take that tour. You know, I think this would be more meaningful if they were able to arrange and be able to take that tour. So maybe it's time. Another one now that we've, we're going to go ahead with this project.
Good idea. Board Member Alred?
I would love that opportunity. And I'm just curious, what is the green vestibule, number thirty-five?
Anybody know?
Is that on the diagram of the building?
Yes, it's bright green.
On the floor plan?
Down in the hallway by the girls and boys room.
What was the question, Amber? I'm sorry.
It just says it's a vestibule. I'm just not really sure what that is. It's in the hallway, right between the multipurpose room and the hallway.
White number thirty-five?
Yeah, I don't, I don't recall it. Might just be. Kind of a hallway. Foyer, like a foyer. I'm not sure.
That's how I recall it, Chad. I I believe it's just a continuation of the of the hallway, but maybe slightly sectioned off. As it leads into the, to the multipurpose room.
Okay, I guess I'll see it.
That's correct.
So, um. Whomever can make those arrangements with the tech college to. Just be, maybe some of us would like to look at the facility again, just to.
Yes, I would refresh our memories.
Absolutely, Board Board Vice President. So I will, I will get that arranged and work with, work with the board and see who wants to go out and we'll, we'll go on a tour.
Okay, and Board Member Richards?
Yeah, I was just wondering. I don't have it in front of me. How many square feet is that building?
I believe it is just over. Want to say seven, just over seventeen thousand square feet. It's about seventeen thousand five hundred.
Okay, thank you.
Board Member Blair?
Sorry, I just thought maybe it would be a suggestion. The last time we. Went for the tour right before a board meeting. And maybe that would be a convenient time, so.
Good idea. Okay, thank you again. On the agenda, it says public hearing if applicable, but I don't know what that was scheduled for.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have one.
Okay. So. Do we need a motion to close this meeting and the? And then another one to go into closed session? Okay, and who will be in the closed session? All board members, superintendent, business administrator. Executive assistant to the superintendent, who else?
Chad Carpenter will be invited, as well as Sonia Davidson will join us.
Okay, so do you want about five or ten minutes to? End this meeting? Oh, I'll I'll do the motion stuff. So we need a voice vote for to go into closed session. And I need a motion.
I'll move that we go into closed session.
Thank you, Board Member Alred, and the second.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Board Member Barker. So we need a voice vote. President Zundel?
Yes.
Board Member Anderson?
Yes.
Board Member Barker?
Yes.
Board Member Alred?
Yes.
Board Member Richards?
Yes.
Board Member Blair?
Yes.
And me, yes. So we'll. Take about five minutes to get ready for the closed session. Is that enough time?
Yeah, we will, we'll just plan on, it's six fifty-five right now. So log onto that closed session link around seven o'clock.
Okay, thank you.